Good evening. I would like to call to order the June 5, 2013, meeting of the Milton School Committee. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few additions and deletions to our school committee agenda for tonight. Under the approval of minutes, we're going to remove the May 21 minutes. We are going to remove the committee update under superintendent's, the superintendent's report, and the assistant superintendent for business interview will also be removed. Are there any further addition or corrections? Okay. Do we have anyone for citizen speak? No one present. Thank you. I'll entertain the motion to approve the April 12, 2013, minutes of the Milton School Committee.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Mrs. Pedera. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? And abstained. So that is 5-0-1.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't there at the visit. This is the one from the morning?
April 12.
Right. So I wasn't at that meeting. So I would abstain.
So two abstentions. Thank you. I entertain the motion to accept the April 24 minutes of the Milton School Committee.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by, what's that, Mrs. Bagley-Jones?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstained. So that was 5-0-1 with Mr. Zulah abstaining. Thank you. And we'll move into the superintendent's report, please, Ms. Gormly.
Thank you, Chairman Sheridan. First on the agenda tonight, I'd like to ask to join us at the table from the Milton Foundation for Education, their president, Margaret Eberhard, and our very successful live-wire celebrations chairs, Anna Christina Kenny and Ann Gattnick. Welcome.
So if we need to say goodbye for you.
If we close our eyes, it was yesterday, and you were here telling us about an upcoming event.
I don't know what I'm going to do when I walk into rooms like this and people aren't applauding. I'm getting used to this.
And so for the viewing audience, we all understand about the Milton Foundation for Education and the two very talented parents who stepped forward to chair this year's event and work along with the foundation's president and its board and so many parents and citizens in the town. And we thought to, the closure on the event will never happen with the impact you're going to have on the district, but we'd like you from the source to talk about the success of the event and share the facts and details and so that the school committee and all of us can thank you.
Great. So it doesn't matter, okay, you can hand me. So we thought this would be, thank you for inviting us to come this evening. We thought this would be a great opportunity to report out on celebration and also to take a moment to thank everyone, to thank the community members, the parents, the teachers, the administrators, the entire town of Milton for the incredible amount of support the foundation receives. I am continued, as I always say every time I come here, to be humbled by the amount of support that we received. And this particular year, our Celebration for Education, which was live-wire, raises money for technology, and this is a two-year effort on our part. Just to backtrack a little, we started an initiative earlier in the year where we, along with the Copen Family Foundation, donated $200,000 to put wireless infrastructure into the schools. And that project is complete and up and running. And so we are very pleased about that. And so the live-wire celebration this 2013 and celebration 2014 is to raise funds to support that initiative, to buy materials, applications, anything and everything in teaching and use to implement wireless education. So we wanted to come tonight to report that the celebration was very successful, and we raised over $220,000. And that is not, that would not be possible without the continued support of the entire community, and we are really grateful for that. We have had an incredible year, starting with the Monster Dash back in October, right before Hurricane Sandy, if you all recall, it was that weekend. And we had a wonderful time, and the money that was raised from that event has been used this year to implement science education in the elementary schools. I had a report from Al and Decker, who's the science coordinator, that we have had programs at the Trailside Museum, they have gone spectacularly. They are going out to UMass Boston, I believe, this week with Bob Chen, and that's going to be an incredible day and activity for the students, and so we're very pleased with that. We just had our Teacher of the Year event, which was incredible and wonderful and is always one of the best nights of the year for us as an organization. And we are gearing up for next year. Monster Dash will be in October again. October 27 will be a Monster Dash this coming year. And then our celebration next year will be in April. We're moving back to April in the hopes that we will no longer be encountering snowstorms. We're very fortunate this year.
Barely.
So we were barely fortunate, driving up to Marriott the day before in that horrible snowstorm. So on behalf of the entire board, we just want to extend our thanks. We look forward to working with the administration now to implement and use the money, and so that when kids come back to school in September, we're going to hit the ground running with lots of new initiatives.
That's it? Anything else? Questions, comments?
I think she covered everything that we were supposed to say.
I was instructed to speak.
It truly was an honor working on the event, and you know, we give so much credit. It was an honor working on the event, and we give so much credit, as Margaret had said, to so many people in Milton, but to all the past chairs of the event as well, who, you know, built it up to the event that it was this year. So thank you very much.
Thank these two ladies for an incredible job.
Do you have the sum total that's been raised by the Milton Foundation for Education?
Oh, goodness gracious.
Over, yes.
Over, over, I don't know. How much would that be, you think?
An astronomical number.
Over millions, yes.
Yes. So it's just, you know, every year it's another amazing accomplishment and adding to and enriching the education of all of the students in the Milton Public Schools. So we thank you so much. Mike, did you want to say something? Okay. Mr. Walker?
I'm not sure I need the mic, but I'd like to say thanks again. You have such a legacy now and such a stake in the success of education here in Milton. And for the children from the elementary grades up, it is just amazing, the impact that you've had and the foresight that you've had. And when you came to talk about the initiative earlier, I said the same thing, but we had talked about this initiative and moving it forward, we had it in the capital plan, and you helped to get it done this year. That's lightning speed. And because of that, the way that we're doing education changes. And as you correctly point out, that's the wave of the future, and we couldn't do it without you. So it's just, you're humbled and so am I, and so are we. It is just amazing to me to have an organization like this here in town that supports the schools the way you do. So thank you.
We were completely inspired this year by the teachers that worked with us on the different initiatives, the technology committee. The teachers came and they just had so many great ideas, and they worked so hard that night at the celebration with all their presentations, the equipment they brought, the things they set up. And so they kept pushing us. They were working so hard, they just made us want to work harder and harder. So we're looking forward to good things in the future, that's for sure.
Yep. Ms. Bagley-Jones?
It's a little noisy tonight.
A little bit.
I just lost my train of thought. Oh, I wanted to remind everybody that this is an all-volunteer organization, that nobody gets paid to do this, and this is what professional fundraisers do, who get paid a lot of money. And to raise this amount of money from an all-volunteer, it's incredible. And I don't know if people understand the amount of hours that goes into this and, you know, the tension that can flare when people haven't had any sleep, or the Xerox machine at the pierce goes off and the program booklet is gone, and, you know, all those things that have happened over the years. So it's just really appreciated, and I see some other former chairs out in the audience, Mr. Corcoran. So, you know, just the amount of work that it takes and the life that you give up is unbelievable. So the appreciation and also to Margaret for everything she's done for the MFE over the years.
It's a team effort, that's for sure, I have to say.
It is. But it's a lot, it's a lot of work effort, too, which is really incredible, so.
I'm fortunate to have, I feel, one of the most talented boards. Every day, amazed by them, totally amazed, and they just make me want to work harder. So it's going to be another great year next year, I promise.
And Ms. Bagley-Jones knows about all that work because she's a former chair of.
As she is.
Yeah. It's amazing. It is a little bit like childbirth, though, because you kind of forget all of the things that were.
It comes back, it comes back.
Mr. Phelan?
Sure. I would like to thank Ann and Anna Christina because the co-chair positions were filled later than normal, and they came into the role and did an amazing job. And as they were coming into the role, Don Green was coming in with the wireless conversation that we began, our tech committee, which Holly Concanon, John Redden, who's here tonight, Sean Walsh, Michelle Cruiser, and you could add Ann Gattnick and Anna Christina Kenny to the tech committee. You were a part of the tech committee. That was their first goal, was to support you and to try to display what technology meant to teachers and students, and you helped them get through that process, and you energized them. So you were a valued member of that group, and we appreciate how you worked with us so easily. And so for the teachers who were working with you all that time, thank you very, very much for all your help and support.
Ms. Gormly?
And to add to what John said, it's great, I think, for the school committee and the public to know that Anna Christina and Ann will continue in the way that these funds are used, the school system will create grants and come up with a short and long-term plan for these funds. And the school personnel actually work with Anna and Anna Christina, and then we go to the board and present how the funds are going to be spent. And so the responsibility, as John alluded, to working on what the funds will be spent on, the fascination for me is that the chairs become so passionate about what the foundation is raising the funds for, but now you're partnering with us, now you're one of us, internally, and we present to the board. So I think it's important for the public to know that those funds just don't go right into the Milton Public School, they're given out in increments, and all the documentation and the Milton Foundation, again, Mary Kelly I look at, Becky Pedera, Lynda Lee Sheridan, who have served in the foundation, can attest to every month the time and talent that that MFE board puts into going over how every single dollar is spent. Those mini-grants, they vote on the grants, they discuss the ups and downs of the grants. So your time and talents, as Mr. Walker said, made a huge difference in the Milton Public Schools. But now you're part of us, and you're on the team.
Thank you.
Mrs. Pedera?
I want to say thank you, too. I was going to say the same thing that Mr. Phelan had said, that it was especially tough because I think late in the season, you two took on this. And I have to say, every meeting I went to, I was, even though it wasn't my responsibility, I was kind of freaking out. Margaret was always so calm, like, "Okay, we still don't have any chairs, but that's okay, we're going to get them," and just such a calming factor, and it was really nice that you took this on. But what I really wanted to say is maybe you could mention, you know, we've talked so much about a great, and it really is a great board, everybody's so positive and so supportive of each other. If anybody wanted to get involved and help out, how would they, who should they contact? Because I think it's a great organization, especially to kind of get your feet wet in volunteering. It has such a direct impact on the schools that, you know, and if you have more hours that maybe you can't get involved in the schools during the day, but nighttime's a little bit better for you, how can people get involved?
So that's a great question, because, you know, while we have a board, you know, board we have, we love to have other people join committees of the board with their talent and their energy and the things they enjoy doing. And they can go to the website, my contact information is on there, they can email or call, and I can put them in touch with the appropriate chairperson of the different committees, and they could help out. And that's a wonderful thing to bring up, because that's another way, we would love to reach out more to people that way. There are some people who wouldn't have the time necessarily to attend monthly meetings or bimonthly meetings, but would love to be involved in some committee, Monster Dash or Teacher of the Year or Grants Committee or something, and that's a great way to reach out to us. So the information is on the website, and you can always call or email me, and I'll put you in touch with the right chairperson.
And that website is?
Oh, www.miltonfoundationforeducation.org.
I was just going to say, Anna is not on the board, but stepped up to chair the entire event, so there are plenty of opportunities for people who aren't on the board to be involved.
Exactly. That's a great point, Becky, thank you so much, yeah.
And I believe they're looking for chairs for next year.
Oh, well, I think we're in pretty good shape for next year. We'll be playing for a little while longer, but we have our final board meeting next week, and we're moving forward, so.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And your whole committee as well, please pass on our best wishes and thanks.
Thank you for inviting us. Have a great summer.
And sharing more good news within the Milton Public Schools, the school committee takes delight, if I could speak for them, and the public has responded, recognizing our teams. I'd like to invite up our girls tennis, MIAA Division II South State Tournament team with the assistant coach, Debbie Higgins. And Debbie, would you join us at the table with the team? Very hot competition last, wasn't it Saturday? So Debbie, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. First, I would like to say that we really had a fun season this year. We had a record of 10 and 6. We made the state tournament, and thanks to these young ladies right here, our three captains, Ursula Beatty and Molly Devlin, and Melissa Tran, who's not with us tonight, but were extremely helpful and showed great leadership throughout the season. Our first match into the tournament was a little difficult. We played Hangum. They defeated us, they were a tough opponent, but we worked really hard, and it was a fun day and a great learning experience to go forward for next year, and hopefully we'll continue our great success. I would like to mention, though, that our first singles, Olivia Johnson, over here, so you can step forward. She's sophomore, and she is a Bay State All-Star, so.
Wow.
She had a great season this year. And our second singles is Grace Womester. She's at the end. And only a freshman.
Wow.
So we hope to have her for the next three years. She had an 11 and 5 record, which is outstanding for a freshman, so, nice job. And our third singles, Ursula Beatty, she's a Bay State League honorable mention and also our most outstanding senior this year. She had a 12 and 4 record this year, so she had a nice, nice season, yep. And then for our doubles teams, we had Molly Devlin, Tori Zimmer, and Kim Nye and Elise Crawford, who's not with us here tonight, but they were extremely instrumental in some of the matches and helping us win the match and get us into the state tournament. So they were, did a fabulous job also. So thank you. And I think that's about, that's about it. We had four seniors that were also on the team that helped us throughout the season. Let's see, Nikki D. Collins, Nicole Karuga-Cooze, Pauline Eugene, and I'm missing a senior, Melissa Tran. And on and off the court, they helped us throughout the season also. I'd like to mention their names, too. But, yeah, that's about it.
Congratulations. Good job.
Yes. Thank you.
Mrs. Higgins, would you pass that portable mic to each of the student athletes, tennis players, and have them introduce themselves?
Okay.
You can pull it right out if you want.
Oh, this comes out.
Hi, Tori Zimmer.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Nye.
I'm Ursula Beatty.
I'm Molly Devlin.
I'm Olivia Johnson.
I'm Grace Womester.
Thank you so much for coming, and we're so proud of each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us. Next, we'd like to invite to the school committee table Milton Crew team, bronze medal in varsity four at the High School Solastic MPSRA Champions.
Thank you.
With Milos, Nicole, and.
Nicole.
And Michael McVay.
That's right.
Excellent. Join us right up at the mic.
My goodness.
And.
So I'm Milos, this is Mike.
Won't you join us right up, take two seats? And then we want all of these students on camera.
You can stand here, Russell.
So maybe they can come up and swing, swing around?
No, we can stand, it's about the.
Oh, that's wonderful.
It's about the kids.
They sit all the time in the boats.
Everybody on camera. Ladies, come on up.
Okay, got it. Thank you for having us here tonight. This is Milton Crew, and.
Yeah.
I don't know if you would, if you would mind for them to introduce themselves.
I'd like that.
I'm Bobby Doherty.
I'm Robert McCullough.
I'm Mike Orshudi.
I'm Will Hess.
Maeve Berry.
Niko Gilmore.
Henry Wells.
Maggie Boyce.
Jake Savanna.
Shane Roslin.
Katie Weidman.
Rachel Joyce.
Kayla Drummond.
Emma Heller.
Josh Carey.
Liv Jensen.
Megan Donlin.
Akivia Ryder.
Shansha Mahmood.
Hannah Kell.
Ellen Chow.
Miranda Callahan.
Great.
Can I get a microphone back, please? Thank you. So, okay, we had a great season, the best season for Milton Crew so far. I've been coaching here since last year, and I've seen a lot of improvement on this team. We're growing slowly but surely, and this team definitely has a promising future. We medaled two weeks ago at the state championships in the varsity four. So Michael Orshudi, Will Hess, Maria Ruk, unfortunately, she's not here tonight, she was our coxswain, Robert McColl, and Niko Gilmore. So those guys medaled. However, it's not just them, it's the whole team who performed pretty well two weeks ago. So the season was very interesting. We definitely started to win some races. It takes time, you know, crew is a sport where you need to put a lot of time and effort in order to succeed. And I emphasized all this season on dedication and determination, and these rowers definitely show that. And I'm really excited to work with them in the future, especially in the fall, and I can promise you, we'll meet you here again. So, and I'm, you know, they're all great kids, good students. I emphasize on that a lot, to have good grades in the school, and without good grades, it's going to be hard for them to compete. So I would let Mike to say a couple of words about our girls varsity team. I'm the boys head coach, by the way.
Yeah, I'm Mike McVay, I'm the girls varsity coach, girls coach. I got here a little late in the season, first time I had any experience with Milton. One thing that struck me about the students here, they're really loaded with activities. You know, they carry a lot of stuff, and I thought that might be a problem, but it ends up just enriching their character, I found. You know, I was fortunate enough to have a lot of really good seniors for my first season here, led by Kayla Drummond, one of the best captains I've ever been around. And we also had the valedictorian of the departing class, Ellen Chow, was a part of this team. So, yeah, we have some challenges, but I think the girls performed as good as I thought they would, a little bit better. We're definitely going to be back here. You know, we can only lay the groundwork, and, you know, these athletes are the ones that execute our plan, and so far, I've been really happy with everything I've seen. So that's pretty much it.
Great.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I would say that I have no idea what crew is all about, other than you're getting something in the river and you do whatever. But I've been so impressed with the program getting off the ground, and I know a handful of you, and I know your parents, and I know maybe more what your parents have gone through because some of them have called me as they're sitting for eight hours in the rain, waiting for you to finish because somebody did well, and they were like, darn, those kids did too well, I have to wait here for the next meet or whatever it is. So talk to a couple of your parents when they've been bored and they've called me. So I know what your parents have gone through, and I just think it's incredible what you guys have done, and I'm so impressed, and I will learn more about crew before next year when you come back, I promise.
I would like to use this opportunity to invite you to come down to Milton Landing, all of you. I would be happy to have a lunch, so you can see what crew is about. Yeah, we do some hard work there. Just for example, we row approximately 12 miles per practice, and that's a long row, I'll tell you that much, so feel free to stop by.
I have a little secret to tell you. Somehow, I signed up to be on your active parent list, and I don't think that you know that. And so I get this anxiety every time I see one of your emails, "You must be here," saying, "Five hours, but tomorrow's raining, so you're going to paint the oars, and you're not going to practice tomorrow, but there'll be three hours of exercises." And so I followed the practice and to these student athletes and to these two coaches who took this club that was new at Milton High School and turned it into a respected sport, into the parents and citizens who stepped up, and they did it for you, and you've shown them how much you've appreciated it.
I would like to thank all of you, the Milton High School, the friends of Milton Crew, the board members, especially the parents, and of course, the rowers. Without them, this would be impossible. And just so you know, rowing is one of the hardest sports to practice. It's in the top three sports in the world to practice, like how hard it is. It takes a lot of dedication to do this and a lot of effort. And it's amazing how they do well in school, and they, you know, they do everything on time, and that makes them like exceptional.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Walker?
First, I'd like to say congratulations. The fact that you guys have been able to medal one year after you started coaching is unbelievable. And it's a credit to the coaches, but it's also a credit to each one of you, because I know that you cannot get to that level of performance by yourself. You have to push each other. And I actually do the Crash Beast Sprints every year. I have a friend who does triathlons, and she said it's the hardest thing she's ever done. So I know how hard it is, and I know how hard you work, so congratulations to each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Pedera? So how long has been, crew been around? What's, it's your third year, did you say?
Third year, I would say. I'm here for, since last year. And just for example, all the other high schools have had like the programs, rowing programs for like more than 20, 30 years. So like you just mentioned, to medal at a state, it's a big deal just after one year. It's a big success for this team.
No, I think that's a success, but if you look at just the numbers, and I'm sure not everybody's here tonight, the number of a team that's just created a couple of years ago, that's incredible. I don't know if it's, it must be something to do with the great coaching, it might have something to do with like the barbecues I've seen on some of your pictures, but I think that you're doing a great job at making the sport competitive, but also fun, so you have a great group of people. So, you know, thank you. I think every time we have another sport that's become more popular and finding a different group of kids that find exercise enjoyable, we're doing a great success. So, and it's not an easy, as you said, an easy exercise to do. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And what did I read that on behalf of the town of Milton, there's going to be summer Community Crew?
Yes, actually, I would like to use this opportunity. Yes, actually, I would like to use this opportunity again to invite you to if you want to see what rowing is actually about, you can sign up for summer program. We will have, Mike will actually coach the adults and I'll coach the juniors. It will run from 6:08 every morning, actually Monday to Thursday. And you can choose, you can do like Monday, Wednesday or Tuesday, Thursday. It's really flexible if you want to stay in shape and see what rowing is about. So, so, thank you for saying that.
I told them I'm on the active parent list.
Yeah, it goes.
When does that start?
It starts on June 2050, if I'm right, yeah, June 2050.
We'll put it out in our email.
I was just going to say, if people want more information, is there a website they could go to or?
Yes, we're working that really hard. It's MiltonCrew.org, as I correctly remember. And thank you for that. And because I want to spread the word around Milton that actually Milton has a crew program. And that it's very important for rowers to be aware of that, you know? Because as of now, we have only 45 rowers, which is not a, it's enough, but we still need to grow to expand in order to like have more, more rowers on the team because other programs have over 100 kids. So, the more we grow, the better results. And like I said, we also represent Milton, they represent their families and at the end they represent themselves. So, so, you know, wherever we go, now they, they will behave and they're like extraordinary kids, so.
Well, Mrs. Padera and I will join you for the community crew.
Yeah. Yeah, me too.
Great. Well, thank you to all of you. That's, we're so proud of you. Thank you.
We'd now like to have, join us another success story in the Milton Public Schools. Our Milton High School rugby team, Division II Massachusetts State Rugby Championship. So, this, this is a very exciting, another, another good news story at the table. Our own Pierce Middle School teacher, Joe Dolan, who's the coach, joined by Ned Cochran, Milton Public School parent and rugby advocate. And I'll let Mr. Dolan make the introductions of the students and tell the amazing rugby story here at Milton High School.
Thank you, Eric. That's quite a buildup.
You can pick it up if you want.
Bring it up. Thanks for having us tonight. I'd like to introduce who's here. Ned Cochran, who was a co-coach this year, who did a terrific job from Milton, Milton resident and was actually one of the co-founders of the Milton Rugby Club, along with his son Alex. Richie Lobb, who's from Auckland, New Zealand. We recruited him to come over from New Zealand this year and he helped us out. And he was a big part of our success story. And I'm going to let these gentlemen, I might not see this microphone again, but I'm going to, Tim O'Connor.
I'm Tim O'Connor, I'm a junior right now and I'm the elected captain for next year along with Phil.
I'm Philippe Jeanvier, some people know me as Philip, and I'm also a junior called Captain with team.
Hi, I'm Joe Kennedy. I graduated early here at Milton High, I'm captain of the show.
So, thanks for having us here tonight. This is quite an honor and we've had an exciting season this year. It seems like yesterday that we were here three years ago, I think, in the summertime. And Ned and I and a couple of other people came up and made our presentation and we were getting a lot of funny looks, like we can't afford this, we can't do this, what is rugby? We're not sure what we're getting into. And I think we made a promise that we would do the best we can. And so, it's really exciting for us, three years later, to sit here and share this, the wonderful news about the success of the program and how well the student athletes have done over the past three years. Our first season, we had 18 kids come out and, which is enough for a team, which is 15. And we won two, two games that year. The next year, we had 28 student athletes come out and we won four games that year. And this year, March 1st, we opened the gates and we had close to 60 players come out. 60 student athletes of all shapes, sizes, colors. And I called it a nice problem, but it wasn't a problem at all because every day was a pleasure. And between our varsity and sub varsity teams, we won 11 games. We had an 11 and 3 record, which is terrific. We started the season with our annual St. Patrick's Day Road Race and we raised over $2,500 for the treasury. One of the highlights of the year was our rugby tackles cancer. We chipped in for the Walkathon that we had recently and we raised $1,500 for that cause. And the kids really came together. So, we're really trying to make this team part of the community. We're, we're getting the athletes out, we're being successful, we're, we're trying to share everything we have with the town of Milton. And it ended on May 25th out at Fort Devens. We played Andover for the Division II State Championship and we came home with a 15 to 12 win. And I was so proud of the kids. It was a terrific day for Milton's sports, but now we've set the bar. So, hopefully we'll be sitting here next year because we're going to get bumped up a division. We'll be in Division One next year and hopefully we can share the same success story. So, thanks everyone here for trusting us three years ago. It's been a terrific experience so far, really terrific. And if you talk to any kid on the rugby team, I think they're going to say the same thing. I'd just like Ned to say a few words. Thank you very much for your help again.
This is great. My, when Alex said to me, three years ago, Dad, we've got to start a rugby team, you know, to have the response that we got right away, which was very positive, and then to have the kids come out. I think we are blessed as a team and as a community because Joe Dolan, I think, is the best high school rugby coach in Massachusetts. And he was ready, willing and able to jump over from Brookline High and take the team on when we first had the idea. We didn't, I thought I was going to have to be the head coach with other former rugby players around town. But Joe was there, he runs a great practice. We have, there were seven coaches, which is unusual for high school because most of the schools have maybe two. And it's very difficult to run a practice with that many kids when you have so few in number. But we can break it down. We attract the guys with the accents that actually still play and that helps. It's been a great success. And one of the big successes, who's not here tonight, was Mary Kelly's son, Brendan, who was our most valuable player this year. You know, rugby's one of those sports that you can take right on into college, like crew. It's amazing how these kids have pulled each other out of other programs, from football to wrestling, into crew, into rugby. And they're growing the program themselves. There's a lot of enthusiasm. It's great. It's great, young athletes, they listen, they pay attention and they play hard and they play well and they really represent this community in a tremendous way. So, hats off to them and hats off to Joe.
Thanks, Ned.
Richie, am I saying? No.
I was going to ask how many of your current team members are seniors? How many are you losing?
We have 18 graduating seniors, which is a bit of a blow, but we've got 42 kids right behind them coming up. Some real talent and some, and I think they're just going to recruit more of their friends to come out. So, we're going to have to sit back and kind of write a new business plan about how we're going to accommodate all these kids. In the 23 years I've been coaching, I've never cut an athlete and I, I don't plan on starting this year. So, we'll just accommodate them and we'll get them games and playing time and, yeah, but we're going to lose 18 solid seniors. And I would bet every single one of them will go on to college to play rugby and beyond and be successful.
That's wonderful. And the gentlemen standing behind you that just graduated, congratulations. Do you plan on playing rugby next year or where are you going to college?
I'm going to work in some technology and play rugby there and continue playing football, so.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Well, I think the success of your team this year and the growth that you've seen will just continue. I think that that success will breed more success and people will come out to find out what this game of rugby is all about that everyone's so intrigued with.
It's a lot of fun. It really is.
To me, it's a very, it's a very powerful story, I always say, not being an athlete, about the power of a coach. The power of the connection to the school and the pride that you've given your school. It always fascinates me that the students at Milton High think they're on your rugby team, when in fact, you're playing rugby, but they feel part of the team. And the pride that you give your school and your community and this crew and rugby, opportunities for Milton Public School students. I'm indebted, I have to say, there are some individuals, if I could take one moment. Everybody makes a difference, but these parents, Mike Orshudi, Ned Cochran, Frank Schroth in the audience, John Rea and Terry Driscoll, just off the top of my head, these individuals have, Frank Schroth's children have left the school district. John Rea's child is in the elementary school. But these individuals came forward and they worked with the school committee and the administration and Milton High School. And what you did, gentlemen, is you created opportunities for Milton High School students and opportunities that might open doors at university and for the rest of their life. And I am eternally grateful to you. And the response in this crew and rugby speaks for the success. And your faces tonight show it and the pride that you've brought to your community and school. You make us very, very proud.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Debbie Jones?
I just want to say one thing really quick. As you know, I'm a huge supporter of the athletic program, a huge supporter. But when Ms. Gormly came along with crew and rugby, I was one of the ones going, excuse me, we can barely support the teams we have. But I'm so glad that she did and that's why she's the superintendent and I'm not. Because this was such a great thing to have happen, both for crew and for rugby. And I know about rugby, just like I know about crew, you know, just about zero. But I'm so impressed with everything that you guys have done and it's great that we have you here. I mean, it really is. So, I was one of those, mm, and I'm so glad that Ms. Gormly dragged us, kicking and screaming some of us, down the rugby road. So, thank you, Ms. Gormly.
I didn't have to do that, they all went along.
Just speaking for myself.
They, they're wonderful representatives for the community and they put all of the issues on the table.
Mrs. Padera?
Well, as you know, I'm a big fan of rugby, but even though I didn't get to a game, I'd like to say that the rug, Milton Rugby Team this year beat my old school that I used to work at, Arlington Catholic. And they've been, had a rugby team for at least 10 years, I think.
At least 10.
At least 10 years. And so, in three years, I mean, they kind of handily beat them too, so. I have an old friend that still coaches their rugby team. But I would like to just put another plug in for the St. Patrick's Day race they have, which I did go to this year. And it was just a lot of fun, a lot of the athletes were there and just such nice young men, were so helpful and really enthusiastic. And a lot of people showed up and I think it's a great community event as well. But I promise to get to at least a couple of games this year.
Better.
I tried.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly?
As a fellow Maysayer, when you folks first came here, for financial reasons only, I love the opportunity to engage kids in any kind of sport. I have to say that I too am grateful that Mary Gormly convinced us that this was a good thing to do, not only because of my personal component of that in that my son decided to go out for it and really loves it. But, you know, I've come to find, I've been to one game because I don't know that I can handle sort of some of the but I did go to one game and I also have come to find that there's sort of a rugby culture that is alive and well in all communities around here that we don't know about. And it really, it's really fabulous. I mean, the trip that you folks, some of you folks were able to go on, all those kinds of things are pretty amazing.
We had seven students from Milton High School join the Boston Rugby Club. Some of these players play in the summertime with the Boston Rugby Club. We selected to play in an invitational tournament down in Bermuda over Easter weekend and we won both games. So, seven of our players here, who went down?
Tim and Ray.
Yeah, so seven representatives from Milton are playing rugby internationally already. And we'll be doing more trips like that with the approval and with planning. So, it is a sport that's unique, where there's a lot of traveling, there's a lot of camaraderie. After every single game this year, our parents put out a meal for the opposing team, whether it was sandwiches or burgers or pizza. And both teams get together and have a pizza and talk about the game and we put them on the bus with drinks and snacks. And I really don't know any other sport that does that. But in rugby, it happens every single game, at the high school level, college level and men's level. So, you play hard and then you get to know each other. And it, it's really a special brotherhood and sisterhood.
I would just add to that, rugby is the second most popular team sport in the world, behind soccer, which is professional. Rugby, more recently, is professional, but historically it was an amateur sport. And these kids can leave Milton and walk into any city or town in the, in the world. And if they're wondering what to do, they can walk into the local rugby club, they'll have a few brand new friends, they'll be treated with open arms. And they can go to New Zealand, Australia, South Africa, Asia, anywhere in the world and find a rugby team that will bring them in. It's that type of a, of a brotherhood of a sport. It's unique among sports worldwide in that way.
Case in point, Richie Lobb, who's from Auckland, has played in South Africa. Did you play down there? No? Go ahead.
So, I've had a few tours when I was in high school myself. So, I went to France and also England and South Africa in my senior year. So, I've met people there that I still keep in touch with today. So, that's, that's an awesome part of the sport. And case in point here, I've got lifelong friends already with Ned, Joe. And I'm sure I'll see these boys down in New Zealand at some stage when they decide to come for a visit, so.
Now, you're thinking of going to France or Ireland or?
Yeah, so I'm off to Ireland actually in a few months to play some more rugby there, so it's kind of on the journey.
So, it's, it's unique where you can travel the world and as soon as you step into a city, you have 30 new friends. And it's terrific, it really is.
Mr. Zula?
Just to mention the culture, from my rugby days in college, I remember a significant musical component. Do you, do you have any of that at that school level?
No, not at the high school level. It's more just slapping the back and getting to know each other. And at the college level, it gets a little more social, but at this level, it's just pizza and high fives.
Although, I would say that Philippe and several of the others, Nico Forts, were very successful participants in the chorus and the music program here. And so, you know, they represent the Milton Schools in more than just athletics. They do other things and singing is one area where they excel.
Mr. Walker?
Well, I was, I just want the record to be clear, I was excited from the beginning about rugby. And I said, if Ned Cochran's involved, I'm in. So, congratulations, guys, the state championship, doesn't get me better than that.
Thank you very much.
So, you've got a, you've set the bar high for yourselves, but I'm sure that you can get there again.
It's going to stay high.
Yep.
Mr. Jett said, I love going to these games, but I don't know what the heck is going on. So, I do have a, a page, it's called Rugby for Dummies. And I'll put it up on the Milton website, so people who are a little bit wary of it can maybe understand a few of the things that are going on. That's a great idea, James. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jett.
And if I might, if I might, I have to say, Mr. Phelan deserves a tremendous amount of credit too. You give me too much credit. Mr. Phelan and I brought the ideas from these parents to the table. And the school committee's responsibility, I think, is important for the public to know, when we talk about athletics, that they, these sports began as clubs and they raised the funds and you proved yourselves. And I, so I want to recognize John. He also, on behalf of rugby, had to educate me about the rugby. Were you a rugby player when you were?
No, I wasn't.
He got educated about it. So, again, kudos to the school committee, you know, they give us credit, but they're the ultimate decision makers.
Mrs. Kelly?
I just want to add that for a sport that not many people know the rules to and even the moves that you folks do, one thing that I know Brendan has benefited tremendously from is the coaching. It, I think, has been an environment that is totally supportive. And it is, I mean, if you watch it, it's difficult, it's one of those spots that the ball goes backwards. I mean, it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense, I think, just even the way you interact with each other. I don't know whether interact is the right word, but the whole scrum thing. I mean, there's a whole bunch of intricate things that go into this. And to have taken, you know, kids in three years to the levels they are now is a testament to the outstanding coaching. So, thank you very much.
Please.
So I was one of those people who did not know what rugby was. This was my first year on the team. I used to run outdoor track, but there was something about the sport. Every time I'd be running on a track, I'll, you know, turn over and look at it and not know what's going on. But my curiosity reaches peak this year and I decided to try out for the team. And I went to the field and I was, during the practices, I was like, it's going to take me a long time to understand this game. But, you know, the coaching I had from Coach Dolan, from Richie, from Coach Corcoran and all the other various coaches that were there, I learned the game quick. And there's still a lot for me to learn. But, you know, to be able to learn a game that I had no experience with beforehand quickly enough to be able to play in a championship game means a lot. And also, the teammates and the kind of culture that we built with so many new players is amazing. And I'm really proud to be part of this team.
Nice.
Thank you, Phil. That's one of the reasons he's captain, he's very well spoken. Very well dressed and really fast.
I'm sure you're glad to have him. And by the way, he set the bar pretty high on the dress code stand.
There's a lot of rep.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate the support.
Congratulations.
Nice job. Next, I'd like to ask to join us at the table, our own Milton Public School, Elementary School Librarian, Lori Henry, and her partner from the Milton Public Library, the Assistant Children's Librarian, Sarah Trog. And so, this is, if I might set you up, the Milton Public Library has a foundation board and one of its members was on the Milton, the MFE, and brought the idea of mini grants to the Milton Public Library. And I'm very proud to say that when the call went out for the first round of mini grants, Sarah and Lori Henry partnered on a very creative idea that has had impact, actually thousands of students. And they presented the success of their grant to the Milton Public Library Foundation Board. And I've asked them now to share with the Milton School Committee and the public. This is an outstanding grant and the benefit to children, it is going to make this Milton School Committee very proud.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly. And we'd like to thank the Milton Public Library Foundation for the grant. We, the title of the grant is "The Milton Public Library and the Milton Public Schools' Community Partners for Student Success." And we are happy to report that true to its name, the grant was an incredible success. The idea for the grant began in the fall of 2012 when Superintendent Gormly started the Milton Public Library Card Drive for all Milton Public School students. And it resulted in over 400 new library cards for elementary students alone. And as Elaine Wyshutte, the Children's Librarian, and Sarah Trog, the Assistant Librarian, and I considered the logistics of getting library cards into every student's hands, we also discussed ways that we could expose more students to all of the resources that the Milton Public Library offers. And from that discussion, from those discussions, the idea for the grant developed. And we, after receiving the grant, Sarah and I spent 15 weeks together, over a 15-week period, we visited, we worked with every single elementary school class. And I think it was a very ambitious and rewarding project. We really enjoyed it. And we'd like to highlight for you tonight, some of what we accomplished.
Sarah. Pull it right out, Sarah.
So, on the dog and pony show.
Yes, I would like to show this.
So we have a video for you, it's very short, to show you some of the students' hard at work. I had two windows there. There's the real player window with the video and then a browser window.
Sarah is also Milton resident and Tucker parent.
I am. So, oh, here it comes, great. So while we're waiting for it, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about what happened when I went to the schools. In January, I started visiting classes at all four of the Milton Elementary Schools. I taught one class at a time, at times when I was not already scheduled to work at the library, so that's why it took four months for me to visit all of the classes. Lori would introduce me to each group and stay with me for the duration of the lesson to help with classroom management. And so then, during the students' regularly scheduled 30-minute visit to the library, I gave a talk where, oh, here it comes, there it is. I would give a talk where I highlighted the following topics. I talked about library programs, what they are and how to sign up for them. I talked about the wide range of physical materials we have at the library. And I did a show and tell with a variety of different materials, including books, DVDs, audiobooks, magazines, and sorry, I did talk about video games. We also talked about library cards, who has one, who doesn't, how to get one if you don't already have one, and how they can be used. And this is the most important part. So you're seeing photographs here of students in grades K through five. I talked to every child in every grade. But one of the things that we wanted to teach the kids about wasn't just the physical building of the library, we also wanted to teach them about the online resources that the library has for students. And so that is what the webpage that I'd like to show is all about.
Should we show this first?
Here, you know, let's, let's watch the rest of this and then I will talk about the online resources, if that's okay. This is at Cunningham Colicott. So I think the message that you get here is that I talked to an awful lot of Milton And the best part about it was that we got them really, really excited about coming to the library and using our resources there. So what I want to show you next is from the Milton Public Library website. This is the children's page of the Milton Public Library website. And as you can see on the left-hand side of the screen, if you scroll down, you can see all of them, there are a number of different brightly colored boxes. Those are called the Cool Tools that Kids Can Use at Milton Public Library. And so, for 15 minutes of the talk, I would spend time talking to the students about the physical building, the physical resources, but then the rest of the time was devoted to these Cool Tools. And just to talk you through what some of them are, the top one is called Book Flix. Book Flix is an online library of picture books, fiction and nonfiction books. It's best used by kindergarten, first grade, second grade, depending on the child's reading level. Then the next one is True Flix. True Flix is another online library of nonfiction books, best for third, fourth, and fifth graders. The next one down is Muzzi Online. In the French program, it's known as Muzzi. A lot of teachers are already using this tool in their classrooms. What's great about this is that it's online and everybody with a Milton Public Library card can use it. It teaches kids how to speak eight different languages, one of which is French and one of which is Spanish. So it's a really useful tool for Milton Public School students. It also teaches Italian, German, Portuguese, Russian, they're all very interested in all of these other languages, it's fun. So then the next three, the next three boxes are all different versions of World Book Online. They're, one of the World Book Online tools, the bottom one, is in French, you actually type in your search topic in French. Lori and I were tested with our French language abilities when we showed that tool. The other two are English language versions of World Book Online. The middle one is for younger students, the top one, Info Finder, is for older students. And then the bottom, Marshall Cavendish Digital, that is another online encyclopedia that students can use. The reason I really wanted to highlight these is particularly for third, fourth, and fifth graders, they're starting to be asked to do research projects and they can use these tools. Teachers are sometimes wary about letting students use the internet, but we know that these are vetted tools for them to use for research purposes. So in order to use all of these tools, you need to have a Milton Public Library card. Could you click on the True Flix box really quickly so I can show you? It's the second one down. Right there, you can't get in without a Milton Public Library card number. So we had cards that the kids could use during the lessons, but the kids were all really motivated to get cards afterwards because they can't get into any of this without those cards. So, so basically, the way the lessons would work with younger students, I would show them a few of the Cool Tools on the smart boards in all of our libraries. With older students, we put them on the computers, you could see that in the photographs, and had them use the tools themselves, because I do operate under the principle that you need to teach a man how to fish. So we taught all those kids how to fish by putting them on the computers themselves. And then, at the end of the lesson, I sent each child home with three handouts. One was a sheet that looks like this, all about the Cool Tools for children and their parents, so parents would know what we talked about and how to access the Cool Tools from home. The second thing I sent them home with is a bookmark, which everyone loves a bookmark, but the best thing about this one is that on the back, it's got the address, the phone number, the website, and the hours of the public library. And then, the third thing I sent them home with was this. This is a coupon, and every child brings this coupon to the library and gives it to anyone who works in the children's room. If they do that, they will receive a prize. I can't tell you what the prize is because there could be some kids in town who haven't redeemed their coupons yet and you still can, so I'm not telling you what the prize is. And I didn't tell them. But, yes. So then you've got a handout in front of you that talks about some of the results of this project. Lori's already talked about the 401 new library cards that we issued during October and November as a result of the card drive. But it says here on your sheet, as of May 10th, 510 children came to the library to redeem this coupon. Update, we're up to 547. They're still coming, they're very excited, and some of these kids were already coming to the library, but a lot of them weren't. And, I mean, we went and talked to a class one day and the next day, a Tucker, Tucker fourth grade class, the next day, one of my son's classmates came in, "I've got to get a library card." She's with her mother, she's with her aunt, fired up about having a library card. So terrific. We've seen increases in the use of all of the Cool Tools as a result of these classes that we taught. Muzzi, usage of Muzzi has tripled following the school visits. And interestingly, the English as a Second Language option is the most, is the second most heavily used option for that language tool following French, which is not surprising considering what town that we're in. Book Flix and True Flix went, use went from 56 and 19 sessions prior to the classes to 722 and 1,915 sessions. Kids are using these tools and they're excited about them, it's thrilling. World Book went from 1,000 hits to 9,000 hits. I mean, I know, I'm getting all giddy about this, but it's very thrilling, this is what we librarians get excited about.
And we educators do too.
Yes. And then Marshall Cavendish Digital, the last one, 93 uses in the whole year of 2012. Thus far, we've already beaten that. So kids are using the tools that we've given them as a result of these classes that we taught, and we're so excited about it, so thank you.
Excellent. It is so exciting. And so, going forward, we hope to continue to collaborate. And we have some ideas. We'd like to, in the next academic year, we'd like to see all of the kindergarten classes, again, have the children's librarians, either Elaine or Sarah, come and visit all the children's, all the kindergarten classes and introduce them to all of the resources at the library. And also, we were talking about a professional development opportunity for teachers as well, because one of the things we noticed, when the teachers would come to the library to pick up their students, they were amazed at what they were seeing, what the children could access using the Milton Public Library card. So we talked about how we could, how we could introduce the instructional resources to teachers that they could then use in the classroom.
Can I interject about that? And in fact, the fourth grade, I speak about Tucker because it's what I know, the fourth grade students at Tucker are currently doing the famed state report, which we're big fans of at the library. And my son's teacher told students specifically, "Use the World Book tool that you learned about in library class." So the teachers are getting on board with this stuff as well, which is great.
Which is great. So, and we, students are bringing their library cards to school and using them in school and we know they're using them at home. And so it's, it's been wonderful. And we're just so grateful, really, for everyone for it. And to the Milton Public Library Foundation for the very generous grant we received, we've really, we've had a lot of fun doing it too. It's been very enjoyable. Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Well, congratulations on your success. I remember when you were here last year, so this is pretty impressive results in a very short amount of time, so congratulations. You must be doing something to excite these kids and that's a good thing.
Thank you.
I have a question for both of you, though. I'd like to set the objective that for each year for our first graders, that by the end of their first grade year, every first grader has a library card. What would that require of us and what would that require of you and the Milton Public Library?
Well, I think that part of our desire to go and visit with the kindergarten classes going forward is to plant that seed. Because we really, you have to be, the rule at the library is that you have to be at least five to get your own library card. And when you're five and someone says you can have a card to put in your wallet, that's a big deal. And they all want one. So by us going into the classrooms and talking to all those five and six-year-olds about getting their own library cards, they're going to be very motivated to do that, so.
How close do you think we are, percentage-wise now?
Good question. Oh, we are, we are very close, I mean.
That's interesting.
That is a good, but what we would say at the beginning of our class usually was, "How many of you do have a library card?" And I would say almost, at least maybe 90% at that point have one. Lots of hands went up.
The older they would, we, the older they got, we would find classes where every single student raised their hand. And that, that was really exciting, but.
But we'll continue to.
I would say in kindergarten, it wasn't quite as high. I'd say 60, 70% of the students maybe had them. And so, so we've got something to strive towards.
But after, with the visits, it definitely improved. So if we continue to do this in the fall, we'll get 100%.
Great.
Mrs. Pedera?
Yeah, I think I was a little skeptical about the library cards at the beginning, just because I was worried my kids check out a lot of books. just because I was worried my kids check out a lot of books, and I like to check on them online. And I'm like, well, if they have their own cards, we're going to have like three different accounts that I'm going to have to check. But I have to say, as a parent, it has worked out wonderfully because I have a fourth grader who now keeps track of her own books, what's late, what's not. And, you know, we've always used the library. And so I was, I was kind of like, oh, well, things won't, you know. She, and Ashley has showed her brother, too, to use different tools. She knows how to get books from other libraries and put them on hold and use the computer programs you talked about for other things. The library has become like a whole new world. Like, she's always loved the library. But I think showing them even more things, especially as they grow older, to use has been just fantastic. So I think that just really encouraging parents as well, that this is an opportunity for them to take a little bit more responsibility. It's taken a lot of weight off of my shoulders because she knows what books are due and what aren't due, and how they can keep track of that as they get older and show more responsibility. So I think it's been fantastic. And you can see from the numbers, too, you know, that other kids are using not just, you know, I love that you laid out not just that we've got 400 more library cards, but all the different programs they're using that were used before. Because that's what it's all about, is getting kids to the library and using all the tools you have available. So I don't know. I know you have a lot of really great programs at the library. And maybe something for parents to show, like, you know, an afternoon of the new tools we're using so they can help kids at home as well, to show them. Because some, you know, parents hear about it and then they forget about it, or they lose that little sheet that was sent home and don't put it up. But just an opportunity, I think, would be great for parents to see how it can also actually make their lives easier as well.
Thank you. That's a great idea.
Ms. Kelly?
Thank you. What enthusiasm. I mean, absolutely. I mean, I can't imagine, those kids must have been so excited after hearing your presentations. I just wanted to ask, you had talked about visiting with kindergartners on an ongoing basis perhaps, but we also have a lot of new families that come into Milton Public Schools at different ages. And I don't know whether we have a new student packet that perhaps your brochure and maybe even that redeemable coupon could be inside to, you know, get them included in all of the information as well.
Great.
Having been a new family two years ago, that would have been really helpful to us. So I think that's a fantastic idea. I'm going to look into that. Thank you.
And I would like to congratulate you. And, you know, I think that, I know that we're so fortunate in the town of Milton, that the citizens, you know, stepped up and passed an override and allowed us to have this beautiful library that we have. But having a beautiful building with no one in it does no good. And you have really provided the outreach to the children and to the families that is so desperately needed. I know that the superintendent highlights your events in the email blast.
Which we appreciate very much.
Right. And I personally always forward them to people that don't have kids in the schools that I know would enjoy those events. So the programming has improved, but this collaboration, this partnership, I mean, we can't do this alone in education today. So the partnership that you've built is really stellar. And you can, we can all tell that that will continue going forward. And to have this data to support it is very powerful. I mean, those numbers are amazing. But I think that there's probably one piece of data that isn't here, and that might be the parents of those kids. So parents that are bringing their children to the library are probably, they themselves, using the library more than they, than they had before. So that might just be an interesting survey that you could take to see if, in fact, the parents are now utilizing the library in ways. So congratulations. And Ms. Gormly?
I'd like to thank Lori Henry. When you look at Lori Henry, she's the person we talk about that services 2,000 children in four elementary schools. And you've done an amazing job. And thanks to the Milton School Committee and the Warrant Committee and Town Meeting. In the advancement budget, we're going to hire another elementary librarian slash technology person to service our elementary schools, to work with us on closing the achievement gap and early literacy and to make, I often said as an elementary teacher and principal, if your library's not the heart of your building, you don't have a heart. And so you've kept that heart alive in each of those schools. And look at servicing four schools. You took on this grant, and every initiative we sent your way, Lori Henry. And so we're deeply, deeply appreciative. And it was, to give credit to Herb Voight, who was on the MFE, and I serve on the Milton Library Foundation, Herb brought the idea of the grants. And I believe that you were the first grant that was awarded out of the Milton Library Foundation. So Herb Voight deserves a tremendous amount of credit as the two of you. And it makes me proud that the Milton Schools are partnering with the Milton Public Library.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you. Very briefly, I want to report that tomorrow, we have our screening committee for the Glover Principalship. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just a follow-up. So the other question that this raises for me, we talked about this
Lori?
A while, no, no, not for them. This is for you. We talked about this a while back. The question of what, how many homes do we have that don't have Internet access? And you thought that you could gather that information through the principals, but I'd like to know the answer to that question.
Good question.
At each, at each school, how many families don't have Internet access? Because that's, that's becoming critical in education these days, and if they don't have it.
And you also asked about, and I will follow up, on Internet access and the technology in the home.
Yeah.
Can I just say something about that? And I think it's a great pursuit. I remember when I was on the Collicott School Site Council, we tried to collect that data, and it was very difficult to get because if parents didn't respond. So I don't expect miracles from Ms. Gormly around that. I don't know why parents didn't respond. It might have been a privacy issue. I don't know. But it was difficult to collect that because we wanted to save paper and not have to send things home. So I'm not saying it can't happen. I'm just saying, let's be realistic. It might be difficult.
I have a different interest, which is, as we talk about the increase in the online tools that we're using, like Study Island, each time we get a presentation from a school, they talk about how they use these online tools. So one way or the other, we got to get the information.
I agree. I'm just saying it might be difficult.
It may be.
Well, no, we're going to work on it. We have to. Very briefly, tomorrow, we have the screening committee for the Glover Principal on this second round. The Tucker Principal that we've appointed is taking two days and coming to the Milton Public Schools on Monday and Tuesday, spending time at the Tucker and with the leadership team. I also want to announce tonight that our athletic director has been appointed, the athletic director in the Dedham Public Schools. We wish Steve Traster all the best. We will be convening a screening committee, looking for a school committee representative to sit on that committee, doing a posting and going through the process. Again, we wish Steve Traster the best in his new position and thank him for his, the time and talent he's given to the Milton Public Schools. This is a very busy last few weeks of school. The Milton School Committee lived in the Milton Public Schools last week with all of the senior activities culminated with a very, very poignant, yet hot graduation last week. Mary Kelly's son graduated. It sort of brings it home when we have individuals we feel like they're our family graduating. And that was a beautiful graduation. And I have to say for me, for our first-year high school principal, I thought that it shows how talented he is. I think the students will always remember their high school principal's speech connecting it to running a marathon and starting the next marathon in their lives. Our student speakers, I thought that the whole, the music at the event, and again, the behavior of our students and their plans in the next marathon that they're going to run is a testimony to the Milton Public Schools and their families and these young adults. And so I'm sure you join me with wishing them well. Tonight, before the school committee meeting, we had the school committee's traditional reception for retirees. In my email blast, I've recognized but one more time, Jane Alcaraz, Paul Aronberg, Ken Aubert, Miri Cleary, Shirley Gallagher, Marian Van Ostrom Hernandez, Ann McIntyre, Vern Nelson, Patricia Ostrom, Simone Rogan, Dale Schneider, and Loretta Swanton. And Chairman Sheridan said she wondered how many years cumulative their service had been to the Milton Public Schools. What was poignant tonight in Ms. Sheridan's biographicals on each of these individuals, all the different aspects of the Milton Public Schools that they were involved in beyond their teaching, mentoring and coaching and clubs and starting life smarts. We could be here all night, but it was very powerful. And I want to thank them for the years of service. Next Wednesday, I fondly refer to this as the school committee slash Kristen Bagley Jones volunteer reception. And it is very heartwarming. On behalf of the school committee, the invitations have gone out. The principals funnel up to us the names of volunteers. We hope that we reach every volunteer. And I said to my administrative assistant, Charlene Roach, I wish you'd send some of these replies to the school committee. These individuals really appreciate, on behalf of the school committee, being recognized by the school committee. And so it's not going to be ice cream sundae, but just like the treat, I'm not going to tell you what the treat is, but that's the school committee's reception. And again, I want to give you the feedback that it's very positively received. That's 6 o'clock in the Milton High School Courtyard. Last week, the Milton Players, they're very successful. Hello, Dolly. It's a show I missed. Did anybody get there? Well, there's
Pierce Players, it was.
Pierce Players. What did I say? Milton Players. They're almost the Milton Players. They're on their way to be the Milton Players. The Milton Pierce Middle School students, half the school emptied out, right, Mr. Phelan, from being there before? The Grade East Festival, and our students won platinum medals for Grade 7, 8 Band, Grade 6 Chorus, Grade 7 Select Chorus, and Grade 6, 7, 8 Strings, Grade 6 Band, Grade 7 Chorus, and Grade 8 Chorus, who all earned gold medals. Very, very exciting. This is exciting. The Phelan, Walker, Spalding Middle School sports teams, basketball and track. I told you about the track meet. Ms. Downs is taking the notes, but she might want to tell the story. Ms. Downs?
We finished our season yesterday. We did a Pierce on Pierce sort of intramural meet. It was very successful, and we're going to start a little Hall of Fame with your runners in both their times. We're bringing 21 athletes to the state meet in Pittsburgh on Saturday. And I think we have shot at a couple of our student places.
Is that exciting? Is that exciting?
Can I just ask a question? Is that rain or shine on Saturday?
It's a rainy day for Sunday.
Okay.
So they're going to the Massachusetts Middle School Track Championship?
We should just point out that Ms. Downs is being modest. She played a significant role as a coach on the track team. So they're taking 21 students because 21 students qualified for the state meet, which is a very big deal in the first year.
Unbelievable. Unbelievable. And it's really a huge accomplishment. The middle school is busy getting their middle school activities, similar to the high school activities, ready. Fifth grade activities are coming up. I want to remind the community that Thursday, June 6, an Internet Safety Night here in the Milton High School Library at 7:00. I've attended these nights. And for parents in the viewing audience, I will promise you, if you attend this night, it will change your life and give you information that will benefit your child's safety and use of the Internet. And again, this is information from experts that travel across the country, providing parents with Internet safety information. It's a very, very valuable evening. I believe Ms. Sheridan is the chairperson of the celebration. We'll probably share with you about the fireworks. The Tucker wanted to report that on June 20th, the school committee is invited to their potluck dinner from 6:00 to 7:30 in the playground. Last week, you asked me the last day of school, and I said, "It doesn't end here." The summer school registrations are alive and well. The extended services in special education are thriving, and enrollments are high. Title I camp is going to be housed at the Tucker to facilitate Tucker families this year. And so the last day of school, a half-day, is on Monday, June 24. And this morning, we had, and this afternoon, two very special graduations. And thanks to the Milton School Committee, the Warrant Committee and Town Meeting, those graduations will continue. The preschool at the high school had their graduations. And they actually thought that they were down in that fieldhouse just like last Sunday. Families in the audience, diplomas in hand, and very poignant that that program, because of the support of the town of Milton and the school committee, is going to continue at Milton High School.
Question? Becky Downs? Mary, any feedback on the high school peer leaders going down to Pierce to talk to eighth-grade students? I know they just went, and it was about 40 students that went down.
Huge, huge.
They went down on Monday.
Yes. And Mr. Phelan and I have been at Pierce School. The response, why don't I give you at the next school committee report of that very successful program, where we found the funding, how the program developed, their future plans. And I know that was initiative that Becky Pedera had voiced. And in the wellness committee, that really has taken root. And they're looking for all different ways to tap Milton High School students to become peer role models. We'll put that on the next agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly. Do the school committee members have a chance to look at the subcommittee form that was passed out? I just wanted to take a final check to see if there were any additions or corrections on that, on that form. Mrs. Kelly?
Just on the policy subcommittee, I could only attend if they're going to be night meetings. If they're going to be during the day, then I wouldn't be able to be part of that committee. So however that gets decided.
And I'm only interested if you're continuing to serve. If you're not, I'm not interested.
On the
Policy subcommittee.
On the policy, okay. I will not be continuing on the policy subcommittee?
Nor will I.
Okay. So Mr. Zulus and Mrs. Kelly, thank you. And are you okay with nighttime meetings, Mr. Zulus?
We'll work it out. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Okay. Thank you for that. I do have an update about the fireworks, Ms. Gormly. Thank you for mentioning that. As you've heard me say here before, there's a new organization in town called We Are Milton. And we have been wildly advertising our Milton Music Fest and fireworks, which was scheduled to be held this Friday night. But just in case you haven't noticed, the forecast for Friday and Saturday is not very good. So originally, our rain date was Saturday evening, but it looks like it's going to rain right through the morning. So we are going to have our festival on Sunday, and we're going to change the time. So it will begin at 5:00, and it will end at 9:00. So the music will continue up on Hutchinson Field at, beginning at 5:00 PM. There will be shuttle buses that will be available from both Pierce Middle School and St. Agath's in East Milton Square. You are, there's plenty of parking at both those sites, so you can leave your car. And you can get a shuttle bus up there beginning at 4:30. There'll be face painting for young children. We have just a stellar amount of performers who will be gracing us with their gifts and talents throughout the evening. So we really hope that you'll bring your family, make it an event, bring your chair and your blanket. There'll be food vendors there. And come and enjoy the evening. So the fireworks will conclude around 9:00. So as soon as it's totally dark, we will begin the fireworks. Mrs. Pedera?
What time do the shuttle buses run till? You said they start at 4:30.
They will go till 10:00.
Until 10:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
So a half an hour before the event starts and an hour after.
Continuous throughout the event?
Continuous throughout. And we actually will have both a bus and a handicap-accessible bus at each one of those sites. So those will continuously run throughout the evening.
Okay.
So we hope that you spread the word, tell your friends and neighbors, and join us on Sunday from 5 to 9. The next thing I would like to give under my chairman's report is that we had not scheduled a meeting for next Wednesday. We had our volunteer reception, and we weren't going to have a meeting after that. But because we cut some of our agenda items tonight, we will be holding a meeting next Wednesday, beginning at 7:00. And the agenda items that were cut from this meeting will go to that. So we will have an interview and vote on the Assistant Superintendent of Business. We will have committee updates from Assistant Superintendent John Phelan. We will have committee updates from Assistant Superintendent John Phelan around the proficiency gap committee, reports from the Educational Technology Committee, the Science and STEM Committee, and I just heard Ms. Bagley-Jones ask for the peer program update. Is that mentor program? I'm not saying that correctly.
Well, it's the peer leaders, and it's an activity they went and did.
Right. So, all those will be on our agenda for next week, beginning at seven o'clock. And that's all I have to report, so we'll move to the finance subcommittee. Mrs. Kelly or Mr. Walker?
So, we, we had talked about a recommendation a while ago from the Town Government Study Committee to engage the Division of Local Services of the Department of Revenue to engage in a financial management review. The school committee and the Board of Selectmen jointly signed a letter back in November requesting that review. And on May 21st, we did meet with DOR representatives to commence that review. In attendance were Marion John, Anne Marie Fagan, Tom Hurley, Ted Hayes, who is the incoming chair of the Warrant Committee, and myself. And as expected, they're going to look at what the existing organizational and management structures are, what the workflows look like, look for potential opportunities for improvements, both in efficiency and consolidation. They expect that they will review all internal controls and checks and balances, and will probably talk with the leads in accounting, treasury, and the school business office on our sides, and every staff member in those organizations. And once they've completed that, they will then begin to draft a report. I thought it was interesting that they said, probably take us three months from start to finish, there's no draft report. At the end, we'll give you the report. So, I suggested that we have a one-month check-in, just to see how things were going, so we can at least have some idea about what the process looks like and how it's continuing. So, they did agree to that. So, we'll probably have a check-in, I would think, if they have gotten off to a good start, probably later this month or early in July. It's interesting, they, they did indicate that they have what they call the bias for a strong hierarchy in financial operations. And what they mean by that is a CFO-type individual to which all of the other business functions report. We thought it was a little curious that they would say they had a bias at the outset, but they did. So, we'll see, we'll see how that goes. Obviously, they make recommendations, and then we decide whether we want to implement those recommendations, so they're only recommendations. But we think that at least on the financial management side, this should give us much more information than we could have gathered ourselves. And they've done this for more than 200 other communities in Massachusetts. So, we think it's like bringing a consultant in, except we don't have to pick for it. So, we're optimistic and excited, and we'll keep you posted.
I'm happy to report that today, the two individuals met with our accounts payable, our payroll, our budget analyst, and myself. And we spent about two hours with them, and they had spent time at Town Hall during the last three days, and I found them informed, asking the right questions, asking very interesting questions, and looking for follow-up.
Mrs. Kelly?
Does the school committee, does any of the boards get interviewed as part of this process?
They didn't frame that as part of their plan. I think we could make a request and see how, how they respond.
And my interest would be in the whole warrant process, in that it is our duty to review and sign off. And for me anyways, what's missing in the present process is when we're asked to sign off, we don't have any idea what lines are hitting to what budget and whether a budget line potentially is going over. And in my mind, that would be a huge improvement for the school committee, to be able to sign off more easily and really create the checks and balances that I think are part of our fiduciary responsibility. So, if at some point, an opportunity comes up to possibly at least contribute that aspect of it in the process, I think that would be helpful.
I can certainly ask them to look at the warrant process. I would think that would be included anyway, but I can certainly make sure that they do that, and then ask whether they might be interested in talking with one or more school committee members.
I have to tell you, when I met with them today, I gave them your email addresses, the finance subcommittee, because they asked questions about Warrant Committee and the relationship with the school committee, the Warrant Committee, Town Meeting, and I said, I think that it would be valuable for you to speak to school committee members and our finance subcommittee. And I explained to them, so I gave them the finance subcommittee's names and telephone numbers and email addresses for them to follow up, because I think that we all have different perspectives. And I said, our school committee members are veterans working on the budget, and some of them have served on the Warrant Committee, and I think, you know, they asked great questions. They said, what do you think about, you know, Town Meeting, Warrant Committee, and I think different perspectives would be of value.
Mr. Zulus?
Laura, did they indicate whether this CFO position would be a consolidated position for the whole town or just for the schools?
Well, they, they referenced two different models, so the answer would be, it could be either. They, they favor a model where it's, it's all of the town's financial functions, but there are some towns where they have gone with that model, but the schools remain separate.
I know that, Mr. Zulus, this is something you were very interested in, coming on board to the school committee, so I'm sure that, you know, Mr. Walker and the representatives would be, you know, interested in, in hearing from you with some of the questions that you would have as well, and I want to thank Mr. Walker for representing us on this committee. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I would say Mike, Mike has been very thoughtful about possible opportunities in this area, and I think that this should give us the information that we need to, to make some of those judgments. We will still need cooperation on both sides, but I think they, they, I expect that they will report out redundancies and potential opportunities for, for consolidation.
Thank you. Mrs. Kelly?
So, one other thing under finance subcommittee, and that is the warrant process. Just if we could review what it is, because I don't know that we were successful at our new operation this time round, but going forward, perhaps we could just explain what that is.
So, if our, our new process, it didn't live, our warrant didn't live too long at the police station, but it did make a visit. Our new process to facilitate school committee members who work long hours so that they, at night or on the weekends, can review the warrant when our offices are closed, where I want to thank Milton Police Chief Richard Wells. He's agreed to have us drop the warrant off and notify the school committee that the warrant is there, so 24/7, school committee members can go in and review the warrant and sign it, and you'll be notified when it's there, and then we'll pick it up the afternoon of school committees. So, we had a late start with everyone getting it down there this time, so hopefully, next, next warrant, it will work. It did, it did visit the li- the mil- the library, it visited the library too. It visited the Milton Police Station, but not, not long enough, so hopefully, we'll perfect that system.
So, the idea with the warrant, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask, so is it going to be at the police station all week? Or is it school during the, I thought it was the school during the week and then the police station on the weekends.
No, that, that's where we got confused. On behalf of the schools, it's going to go to the police station, because some night, a school committee member might want to go there at seven o'clock at night.
Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that they, the people that were saying that were saying the weekends were when they were going to look for it, and so-
I think they, they might avail themselves. I shouldn't speak for the school committee.
My understanding is, as of right now, that the way it will work, and just for clarification for people at home, this warrant is the stack of bills that are paid by the Milton School Department, and we as school committee members are responsible for signing off on that. And it's been a challenge for some of our school committee members to be able to, to do that. So, we are availing it, as Ms. Gormly said, to school committee members on weekends when the school itself isn't open, that, that the school, school committee members can go to the police station. So, as of now, when we get a notification that the warrant is ready, it will go to the police station, it will stay at the police station. The only time it will come back here is if there's a school committee meeting, if people want to sign for that, that exact night. But when we get the war, we'll also be, when we get the notification, we will also be told when it is due back, so that, or when people need to sign it by, so that there's, there are some parameters around that. So, is that, is that helpful? Ms. Bagley-Jones?
To me, I don't know. I would rather see us work towards a schedule of when it's supposed to be done, because what happens for me is I get a call saying, you need to come sign it now. And it's like, well, I can't. And so, yeah, maybe I could go to the police station, but if I know it's done, and it's gotten much better than it used to be, it really has.
Ms. Bagley-Jones, the way, the way the plan is now is that you will get notification when it's available, and it will be at least over the weekend, so you'll have-
I know, but that's not what I'm saying. I don't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm saying, you know, it's every Monday, it's every other Monday, but it seems, there's no schedule of when it's due. It's always different, and that's the hardest part for me as a school committee member, is never knowing when it's due. So, it doesn't matter to me, I mean, I prefer coming here, but I'll go to the police station. To me, it doesn't matter, it's not going to make it easier to go to the police station if it's like this. It doesn't work for me. So, I don't know what the turnaround time of it is. I'd like to know when to expect it.
Let me talk to that office and come up with a schedule.
I like signing it here, but if we don't, if, I know it's due more, bills are due more than once every other week, but I really need a schedule for that.
I'll work on a schedule.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll bring it to the next meeting.
Mrs. Kelly?
Just on that point, the month of June typically is a warrant a week, just as we're winding down, just historically, if not a couple more in one week, so.
Good to know. Thank you. Any other comments about the warrant? Anything else, Mrs. Kelly, for finance subcommittee?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any old business citizen speak topics to respond to? In addition to the agenda items I've already outlined for next week, are there any other items? Mrs. Kelly?
Just, could we get a first-grade program selection update?
That's great.
We'll also come, give you an update on kindergarten, after kindergarten screening now.
Any other new agenda items? And we have no one here for citizen speak, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to public session, but to adjourn directly from executive session for the purpose of contract strategy for collective bargaining with the MEA. Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Bagley-Jones. That's a roll call vote, Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Padera?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you, and good night, and hope to see you on Sunday at Hutchinson Field on Adams Street.